Welcome to the Town of Gilbert's Planning Commission for April 1st, 2015. Can I get a roll call?
Chairman Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Vice Chairman Christopher Sippel.
Present.
Commissioner David Blazer.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney. Commissioner Brett Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Alternate Todd Hall.
Thanks. It brings us to item number six, which is approval of agenda. Vice Chairman?
Your Honor, I move to approve the agenda with the following changes, that we move items 10, 11, and 12, S 14-12, U P 14-12, and U P 15-04 to the public hearing non-consent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by the Vice Chairman Sippel and a second by Commissioner Moody. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. Brings us to item number seven, which is communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on a matter not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to criticism and asking staff to review the matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak in this matter? Seeing none, we'll move on. At this time, we'll recess the Planning Commission and convene as the Board of Adjustment. And like to bring item number eight, which is A P 14-04 and Z I 14-16, which is speaks a matter of interpretation of storage yards for rent. And the use of pre-manufactured metal buildings and prohibited G I. The applicant at this time has withdrawn. And so we will not act upon this matter. So I'll now adjourn the Board of Adjustments and reconvene as the Planning Commission. This is a public hearing on the consent agenda. Consent public hearing items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent of the public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion. At the request of a member of the commission or staff, an item may be removed from the consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent hearing and approved under one single motion. With item number nine, U P 15-01, which is a Verizon cell tower for conditional use permit, staff is requesting a continuance to the May 6, 2015 agenda. And then items 10, 11, and 12 are all moved to the consent, non-consent agenda. So do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Chairman, I move that we, that we adjust the agenda as you have mentioned.
Okay. And so we'll be approving the consent agenda with the continuance of U P 15-01.
Correct. Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Bloomfield and a second by Commissioner Whitman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. This brings us to the non-consent public hearing. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearing, anyone who wishes to comment in support or opposition to the public hearing may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, must fill out a public comment form and indicate the number on which you wish to be heard. Once a hearing is closed, no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. To speak, there's green cards and on the back table, and if you could bring them up to the front roundtable, they can bring them to us. So that brings us to item number 13, which is U P dash 15-02, which is the East Valley Patient Wellness Center. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I forgot. We moved 10 all the way across. So actually, that brings us to item number 10, S 14-12, Somerset, which is a request to approve plenary plat and open space for 222 homes.
262.
Oh, 262. Number. So Bob Carvana.
Good evening, Chairman, Commission members. Bob Carvana, Senior Planner. Tonight is, I'm proud to present Somerset subdivision. It is a high-quality subdivision located at the southeast corner of East Pecos Road and Greenfield Road. As you can see on the vicinity map, the subject site is zoned SF 10 and SF 15, which is compatible to the adjacent zone districts surrounding the subject properties, which are SF 7, SF 10, and SF to the east, and then SF 35 to the south, and SF 10 and SF 15 to the west, and then a combination of general commercial, community commercial, single-family attached to the north. Presented on the slide is an aerial of the subject site. As you can see, it is an active farming site at this time. The arrows point to the access points to the subdivision. In previous discussions with ordinance, there was, I'm sorry, in previous discussions, the main entrance is going to be near the temple and then also off of Greenfield Road. As part of ordinance 2353, there was two other access points to the east of the subject site, the northern location, and then the southern location. And I will get to that a little bit later. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And so the upper section is East Remington Drive to Higley Manor, and then Chambrey Road to Strattland Estates to the east. Just to do a brief overview of the subdivision, this is a plenary plat and will be developed in seven phases. Once again, the zoning is SF 10 and SS 15 and SFA. 169 lots are SF 10, 93 lots are SF 15. Notably of the subdivision is that these lots are larger than the minimum requirements. This is a nice, as you can, a nice-sized lots, good for, it's a subdivision designed for families. In general, the SF 10 is to the north and the SF 15 is to the south. It meets, it is 1.47 dwelling units per acre, which meets the general plan standard. And then the open space acres of 32.1 acres. Once again, this area to the north is zoned SF 10. This area to the south is SF 15. The cross-sections meet the city standards. There is one private road cross-section, which is BB. There are sidewalks and then also tree lawns, tree lawn area, if you will, on the remaining sections. The lower section is then also for a private eventual cross-section for what is in this area is existing single-family residents, which is the developer's families. Once again, these are the points of that were developed. These are the gated entrance. This gate in this location is locked open, as well as this one, and the connection is made through here. This, the main section through the subdivision is Somerset Boulevard. Before you also is the phasing of the development, the seven-phase development of the project. As a project develops, active farming is going to continue. There are irrigation ditches that will then be vacated as the development occurs. There is a main irrigation ditch that runs east-west across the property and then also southwest and then the lower area. There's an agreement with the private ditch provider to cover and tile the ditch and underground it. So then also then becomes part of a amenity feature where a trail will be located. The open space plan has been reviewed by the DRB study session on March 12, 2015, and it really is a tremendous community, which very prominent gatehouse entries, and I can show that later if you'd like. And those gatehouse entries are located at this location and then also Greenfield. Also, there's a gated entry at this location that controls the access and makes it private to the lower SF 15 areas, but the rest of it is open. Part of the amenities associated with this project is an integrated trail system throughout the community. What you'll see on the screen in front of you is a distance, the circles indicate 800 feet circumference, and each one of these lots are located 800 feet to an amenity area. And that exceeds the minimum requirement. The minimum requirement's actually 880 feet and one-sixth of a mile. There's four active parks, six passive parks, four tot lots, a lake, Ramadas, barbecue, bocce ball courts, tennis courts, basketball, and playfields that are dedicated and just active. A notice of public hearing was sent out to, according to town, according to the town requirements. We did receive two comments, one from a Mr. David Chase, who's an adjacent resident to the property. He's concerned about his property values as the subdivision has smaller lots than to his, which are SF 15, or SS 15, where his is SF 35, a little bit over an acre. He's also concerned about privacy concerns, the ability with the development of two-story homes on his backyard and with the ability of people to look into his yard and essentially he loses a sense of privacy. Also, there was a Mr. Eric Anderson, who was a former property owner, who called on behalf of the property that he sold it to. And in general, he was expressing similar concern for this property owner about decreased property values and privacy, and had a concern that in the past, there may have been a city policy of having a buffer yard. This is the properties on Melrose Court, and then also along the southern property, and then also Maplewood Circle. I believe this is Mr. Chase's house. As you can see, they're nice-sized lots. They're over an acre, and they're improved with recreational amenities and some storage. So the analysis is that this plat conforms with the general plan and the L D C requirements. It is also compatible with adjacent land uses. Staff recommends approval with that one stipulation concerning the infrastructure of the flow, insert of the slope to point to for, as long as the Miracopa County Environmental Services approves that. And then also the final open space plan to be approved by DRB on 4/9. And that, you have the staff recommendation in front of you. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Whitman?
I guess it's not really a question, but more of a comment. Since this case is a preliminary plat and open space plan, well, I think our purview here is somewhat limited. It's not a zoning case, so we can't talk about land use and its compatibility with adjacent properties. We're strictly bound by determining whether or not it meets code requirements as designed. And so I think there's a couple of neighbors here that may want to speak to a couple of items, but I think we just need to remember, remind ourselves, unless council thinks otherwise, that we need to keep our discussion limited to whether or not it complies with code. If it complies with code, then we don't have much liberty to discuss otherwise. So before we get down a squarely path, I just wanted to make sure that we're all focused on the same agenda. But appreciate your overview.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments at this time? Okay, thanks. Okay. Does the applicant have anything they wish to speak at this time?
Commissioner Oller and members of the commission, my name is Nathan Anderson, and I'm here representing Lesweare Investments, the property owner and applicant. We appreciate staff and their overview and don't want to really repeat that presentation, but just wanted to communicate a couple of additional things that as we have, we've been working on this project now for many, many years. And our primary goal, really in all of this, was to create a community that complements the beauty of the temple for years to come. And we have felt like that we have accomplished this, the distinguished old-world features, entry features and design elements throughout the community, the larger than normal lots. In fact, I think we'd be hard-pressed to find a community this size with this many larger lots in the town. The good connections to surrounding neighborhoods, the abundance of usable open space, all of these things add to that. And so we've worked hard with the temple, with the town, with surrounding neighborhoods to accomplish this. We feel like we've done that, and we hope that you agree. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have and would perhaps reserve a moment or two for additional comment after some neighbors have a chance to speak.
Great. Yeah, you'll have time after conversation. Do we, do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few cards here for the public. I'll just read them through, and if you wish to speak, come over to the podium. First, I have Gordon Fiacco. Will you state your name and city of residence for the record?
Fiacco. Well, I assume in lieu of Mrs. Whitman's comments, that we're not able to talk about, you know, my reason I'm here is because my lot is approximately 235 foot wide. I'm going to have three homes behind my lot. So in the past, you know, I heard that we've been working on this for a long time. The last time I sat down with anyone on anything to do with the property behind me, it was zoned at one acre. It was a Circle G development, and it was horse property, and there was going to be a trail between our properties. So this is the first time I've heard that we've switched to a different type of development with half-acre lots behind me. So I would like to see it remain rural and remain one-acre lots.
Mr. Fiacco, I think unfortunately, we are not at purview to discuss that. It's a land use issue. That land use has already been decided, but you're free and welcome to meet with the planner, and he can go over what's been approved in the past. And you can obviously sit through this discussion and talk about what's going to be approved or may be approved as part of the plat process, but unfortunately, we can't talk about land uses.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Next, I have Todd Nuttall.
I'm Todd Nuttall, 2636 East Melrose Street here in Gilbert. I'm one of the adjacent properties at the south side of this development. We've been there since 1997. I think we're the longest contiguous homeowner there, directly adjacent to the property. Actually, we welcome the development overall. I, like others, am actually surprised at just that lower section of homes going in. This is the first time, while the comment was made, that they've worked with neighborhoods, this is the first time I've seen that change. We'd always been told and shown in the past that it would be a transition from our one and a quarter. We're one and a quarter, one and a half acre, so these aren't just one-acre lots. These are nice, big lots, well-developed, got, and we were always informed that it would slowly transition from one acre to half acre and ultimately to quarter acre. So it wasn't till literally today being shown what got published in the paper a few days ago, I missed it, that I'm seeing a half acre right across the border, right across the back of my property. I know a couple of other neighbors that couldn't be here tonight. They've also expressed the same concern, that they didn't realize that at all. So that entire Melrose Street at the south border, if we had any druther, if we could make any influence on the developer, it would be at least on those first ones right across the wall that'll be going up, where today it's our irrigation ditch we share with the farm. It would be for those lots to be three-quarter acre or an acre or just a little larger to encourage two things, more privacy, keeping the homes, usually if it's a larger property, they stay to one level. It keeps more visual privacy and it keeps that distance there. But going back to the prior developments that we had been a part of, this was surprising in that transition, though we do welcome the further development overall. So I was hoping there would be something here. I actually did not realize that all of it had been transitioned to SF 15. We were actually under the impression, so somehow we missed that meeting in 2012, where it was changed from SF 35 or changed from just farming to residential. So I'm worried that we're trapped, that we missed something, and now we're stuck with what's there. But it would be our encouragement to have those, that first layer of, that first street transition to be larger properties. Even if they are SF 15, they can still be three-quarter acre, and that would be our encouragement. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Buescher?
I'm a landowner directly across the street from where they're proposing this development. I was not informed when I purchased my home five years ago that it was going to be developed to begin with. Since my home sits down off the street quite a bit, the privacy that I would lose, the views that I would lose, I'm totally opposed to the development of the property. I can't guarantee me that families that go in there are not going to, somewhere down the road, have drugs going on in there. And I work in a professional building that deals with drugs and alcohol on a continuous basis. My concern is the neighborhood, the safety of the neighborhood, and my privacy, the effects it's going to have on my land.
Okay, thank you. Next, David Chance.
I'm actually David Chance. The report says David Chase, but it's Chance. I currently own property on Melrose, and I apologize to Ms. Whitman, Commissioner Whitman, but I still want to go through my little speech here. So I'm a, my history is a builder and developer for 37 years, so I know a little bit about this process. I'm not one of those people that's a NIMBY, that's not in my backyard type of situation. I support the proposal to the, to the north of my property. There are two concerns that I've shared with the Bob, and that is property values and privacy. And let me set the stage here a little bit. There are 10 lots, one acre plus lots across that southern boundary. It's been the practice, maybe not the policy, of the city council in the past to transition. I don't see where a 15,000-square-foot lot is compatible with a 35,000-plus lot. I mean, ours is fully developed on the southern border there, and the smallest lot there is an acre, and it goes up to Gordon's lot, which is 1.8 acres. So that's not exactly what I would call compatible with the two. And just to kind of show you also with the compatibility, the property on the east of my house is on the market for 1.2 million, and the property west, two doors over, is 1.1 million. I don't believe that that 15,000-square-foot lot is going to be compatible with that type of price range. Because normally in 15,000 square feet, you're looking at a 350,000 to 400,000 square foot, or $350,000 to $400,000 value. To give you a little more comparison, my lot is 60,000 square feet versus 15,000 square feet. I don't think that's exactly compatible. The depth of my property and all those properties along there is 300 feet. That's not only the property bordering, but that's the lot and probably most of the lot across the street, which gives you what is compatible with our property value or our property size. The privacy issue is when you look at, and I talked to Bob a little bit about the The privacy issue is when you look at, and I talked to Bob a little bit about this, when you're looking at a two-story home on that 15,000 square foot or that 120 by 180 lot, all of our houses are approximately 200 feet across there from the back property line. Well, the geometry of a two-story house, if there were any, there are two of the 10 that are two-story. They're 200 feet from the back property where the new development, the proposed development will have two-story houses or could have two-story houses over about a 40-foot backyard. I have two examples of what I'm talking about.
Oh, we have to, can you just narrow it down?
Okay. Two developments. One, my mother-in-law worked with Shea Homes up Gilbert Road here several years ago. There was an older subdivision with three-quarter acre lots. The subdivider put three-quarter acre lots against that house. Also in Finley Farms and a 300 acre subdivision, they did the same type of thing. They put one acre lots against an older subdivision, which was like 20 years old, and they did the same thing there. So my recommendation would be to turn around and if nothing more than to give us a little bit larger lot back there and minimize it to, by the larger lot having a single-story homes across there so that we're not adversely impacted with the privacy on our lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything to add or comment?
Thank you, Chairman Oler and members of the commission. We really appreciate the neighbors that have spoken and, but just wanted to make a couple of additional comments. Along our southern property line, there are 16 lots. There are approximately 23,500 square feet. And except for the easternmost lot, which is actually two lots combined of the, of the northernmost row along Melrose that the neighbors have been talking about, the ratio is about 1.25 to 1.5 Somerset lots per their one acre. And because of the distance between from back of house to, to their rear lot and, and the rear yard setbacks that are already in place under the SF-15, and we feel like the transition is appropriate. And I know this is not the purview of this commission, but wanted to respond publicly to the neighbors on that in this, in this hearing. So we would just respectfully request that you approve the preliminary plat as is and we'll continue to reach out to neighbors and again, appreciate staff for all they've done.
Does staff have any further things to add? Okay. Thank you. Have any other questions for staff before close? Great. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion and motion. Commissioner Muti?
I, I have a question, maybe this is for Commissioner Whitman or for council. Is, is it within our purview right now to talk about single-story restrictions along that southern boundary? No. Okay.
Counsel would agree with Commissioner Whitman.
That's a land use item.
Okay.
Are you ready for a motion, Chairman?
I am ready for a motion.
Since the development plan or the subdivision plat or preliminary plat is proposed is in accordance with the town code, I would, we would recommend approval of the findings for S-14-12 and the preliminary plat for Somerset on approximately 179.25 acres consisting of 262 single-family lots generally located south of the southeast corner of Pecos and Greenfield Roads, zone single-family 10 and single-family SF-15.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion of approval of S-14-12 by Commissioner Whitman and a second by Vice Chairman Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. That brings us to item number 11, UP-14-12, the Verizon PHO cell tower. And that also is Bob Caravano.
Before you is UP-14-12, faux Cortino. It is a Verizon wireless communication facility with a 65-foot tall monopalm, monopalm. It is located at the southwest corner of South Power, Powell, Power and Los Altos Road. As you can see on the overhead, the property is zone GC. The northern property is zone MF, multifamily. And then to the east is the city of Queen Creek and then to the west is residential property. That is, that is zone SF-6 with pad. These are all zoned with a plenary development. And I believe in the audience tonight, you'll have some members from this neighborhood who would like to express some concerns. The aerial photo shows that the existing site is built with retail and offices. The subject site is located to the rear of the property. And it does meet the setback requirements. It is a 500-foot setback from the front, 419 feet from the east. And then to the west, it's 205 feet and four inches. That is where the residential properties are located and to the rear, it is 31 feet six inches. Distance to the residential area is 205 feet four inches. The requirement is, minimum requirement is 71 feet six inches. On this, on the overhead projector is the site plan detail. As you can see, the cabinet, the nine-feet, three-inch cabinet is surrounded by a screen wall of eight feet, is going to be painted to match the existing trash enclosure. The monopalm is 65 feet tall and adjacent to that is a covered parking area. And then to the north are also existing retail buildings and offices that should also screen the site in monopole pine. Also, there is landscaping to be planted around and screen the, the, screen the wall as well as the cabinet. This is elevation detail, the monopole pine. Minimum, there's 65 fawns, the palms. This is the antenna area. The overall height is 65 feet. This is a pineapple, faux pineapple fixture that enables co-location to occur. And again, the equipment cabinet is nine feet tall, just slightly peaks out over the eight-foot screen wall. Again, this is the parking canopy and then also a trash enclosure. This is a provision of the elevations, north, south, east and west. And per the application is required to provide a photo simulation. The photo above is the existing condition and then with the proposed monopine. This, this view is from this location towards here. View two is from the east, looking down towards the monopole pine. And then view three is from the adjacent neighborhood, this location. And then finally, view four is up at this location at the end of this street and this is the monopole pine, monopalm area. A notice of public hearing was sent according to town requirements. We did receive a phone call from Mr. Brian Sexton. I believe he has not been able to attend, but his wife will, is here, I believe, to speak on his behalf. He does have concern of the height and decrease of property values and has a concern, why couldn't it be co-located elsewhere? Staff recommends approval as it meets city code. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time? Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Can the applicant come up and state his name and town or residence?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jason Sanks. I'm a land use planner with Shawn Associates at 1222 West Cavedale in Phoenix, 85085. I did prepare a brief supplemental presentation for you to give you a couple additional exhibits, considering that we knew that the application would be pulled for tonight's meeting. Thank you. I guess I can go ahead and move on from slide one. So staff did make a full presentation, offering you the site plan and elevations and the, the perspective from the photo simulations that were taken. I wanted to address the area, the, the issue that came up with Mr. Sexton, who I did email with last night in an effort to kind of understand his concerns. And certainly we, we deal with these concerns throughout the valley when we're looking at the installation of a wireless communication facility. So one item came up as why can't you co-locate somewhere or just locate somewhere else? So the search area for this particular installation was located between Germaine and Power and Los Altos and Power, which is to the north. The need for this installation is driven by service levels in the area and service levels now and what's anticipated in the future. From the aerial you saw a moment ago, you saw some vacant commercial property to the south. That commercial property is soon to develop and this installation is intended to address particularly 4G LTE data services in the area which are lacking. I'll bring up a, an aerial in a moment to outline our efforts over the last 12-plus months to locate on parcels within this vicinity. And oddly enough, this is the only location that we had a property owner willing to work with us for the installation. We are basically a private utility and at the, you know, kind of at the mercy of adjacent owners and where we can actually get a lease agreement signed for the property and locate the monopalm. So if you look at this aerial, you can see the red box. That was our preferred search area. So the, the monopalm is what we would refer to as a macro site. It's a powerful site enough to give the relatively high-density power ranch development to the immediate west. You can see by the cluster of housing that although it may be SF-6, it's probably designed at a relatively high-density level. Furthermore, there are a couple apartment complexes in the area that are dragging on the data services. And then that vacant property, as you see, is now under plans for development in the initial stages and some of it's been built and that's drawing on the 4G LTE. So I'm going to use the pointer, if you don't mind, in case I don't blind myself. If you, if you look up here, this is the proposed location. Our preferred location would be in this ring or as close to it as possible. Otherwise, the, the tower becomes too far and it's, it's not actually accessing the customers that need it. So if you look to the south, we tried for 12 months to work out a lease agreement with the property owner here and were unsuccessful. After about 12 months, we, you know, we resorted to having to work with somebody that will work with us. So we've looked at this property down here. They were not able to work with us. Furthermore, we have a couple corporate users that do not entertain actually working with monopoles or monopines, monopalsms. They won't have them located on their property. This kind of retail area up here, the parking area requirements and the grading and drainage requirements did not actually offer a site large enough to accommodate the equipment enclosure. And then we worked with Home Depot for a short time and the only place that they would allow us to go is in the far northeast corner and that's actually just too far from the search area and that would require a future installation back down over here to get the customers that are in this big circle over here. Because really, the serviced area, if you could imagine, is something like that. So we're trying to get this whole commercial corridor in the high-density in power ranch. What I wanted to do is I, you can tell I went on Google Earth and tried to spin this just a little bit, but I wanted to look closely at the development pattern of the residences located to the west. Certainly they have a concern, you know, there's a 65-foot fake palm tree or monopole, as you may call it, proposed on this facility. If you look over here, you can see the development pattern of the relatively narrow lot residences which are alley-loaded. So this Loop Local Street that's in this, in Power Ranch has garage access from the back and all of the homes orientate to the green court. These are a single-level looking duplex-type design and you'll look, if you can, I can't zoom in and you can't quite see it here, but those are only clear-story windows that actually face the office park. They're not actual windows, like a living room window or even a bedroom window that would look out to the office project. And then they have an amenity area over here that's lined with day palms, just like the kind of faux monopalm. And hence, that's why we went with the monopalm rather than a monopine. We have a six-foot wall here and their entire subdivision is lined with, I believe, Mondal pines. The office development has mature trees in this landscape triangle, which will also help buffer the view. This is just kind of a zoom in. You can see the development pattern a bit more closely and then the mature landscaping. If you look at the trash enclosure, the monopine is, or monopalm is proposed right here. So this better illustrates the Loop Local Street, which buffers the office development and then also illustrates the wall and the landscaping that's in place. Well, the, the concern with this set ex has come up repeatedly and often does with, with tall wireless communication facilities. And the means that most cities address this with is the preference for what's, you know, disguised facility, whether it's a, you know, on top of a fake palm tree or a fir tree, it looks like a large Christmas tree. And I believe that was the same proposal that was continued on tonight's agenda. At this point, the monopine would be the only other alternative for this site to get the height that's necessary to get within the search ring. And then lastly, you know, there's really not any industry research in the 10 to 15 years that I've been involved with this that actually suggests that it does lower property values. Rather, you need to consider the lack of services as a private utility, how that may impact property values as well. Health and safety concerns were cited in my correspondence with the property owner. They weren't on the actual staff presentation, but just as a reminder, monopalsms don't produce any noise, light, heat, glare or smoke. And on the, based on the Telecommunications Act of 1996, we're really limited on how much we can evaluate health concerns or, or safety based on the location of wireless communication facilities. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or put up any of the previous slides for reference.
Right. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? No? Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. At that time, I'll call on the public, starting with Brian Sexton. Has opposed that item and wish to speak? Thank you. Say your name and town or residence.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Brian Sexton. I'm a Gilbert resident and before I start, I want to say Mr. Sanks and Mr. Caravona have been wonderful to work with. So it's very helpful. Thank you for your time. In contrast to what Mr. Sanks said, my argument isn't just simply, I want it somewhere else. My argument is much more complex than that. It specifically goes against the four facts of findings that the town of Gilbert has put out in front of you. Number one, the fact of finding is detrimental to health. As stated, the 1996 federal law prohibits you from opposing this case based upon health. But the World Health Organization has recently listed this a 2B carcinogen, which means it's possibly causes cancer. With a little bit more research, it'll be a 2A carcinogen, which means it does, or more than likely, causes cancer. So my argument against this fact of finding is, is that the town of Gilbert's statement says that it is not harmful to health. And I, I say the inverse of that. Prove to me that it's not because I have to prove that it is. So you can't state in this report that it's not detrimental to health when there's reports out there that are ongoing that says, suggest that it is. So at best or at worst, it should be neutral. Fact of finding number two is stated by Mr. Sanks that they tried to purchase within the area and they were unsuccessful in doing that. I don't, I don't question that because that's why we're here today, but I do question what that negotiation was like. If I went into a Ferrari dealership and offered $20,000 for a Ferrari, I could come back to you and say I wasn't able to buy it. They wouldn't sell it to me. I don't know what the negotiation was. Did they really put out a fair proposal to that? And I think that's, I think that should be something that should be answered. I mean, how do we as a public know that they did this and, and with a, a fair proposal put in front of them? Fact of finding number three, I agree with this. We'll skip over that one. Congratulations to all of us for an agreement. But fact of finding number four is that it's not unreasonably going to be impactful to But fact of finding number four is that it's not unreasonably going to be impactful to my right to enjoy the property. The National Association of Realtors cited a study on their website that 96% of prospective home buyers, they would not prefer to live next to a cell tower. Of that 96%, 79% say that they would use that as leverage to negotiate a cheaper price. In short, it affects property values based on the study that's cited on National Association of Realtors' website. So, I think that's reasonably impacting the quality of life in addition to any concerns, warranted or not, of health. That is reasonable to me as a right to deny this, as I would ask each of you to consider, would you prefer to buy a house with a cell tower? I mean, if you're buying a house, are you going to sit on your couch saying, the last thing I really want to do besides my new flat-screen TV is I wish I had a cell tower in my backyard 200 feet away? I don't think a reasonable person would go for that. So, I think it's reasonable to say that this is an unreasonable request. And the last point that I have to make is that this property has already been fully developed. The property owner is receiving revenue from the commercial development. This is an accessory use. This is in addition to the piles of money already being accumulated by this landowner. It will be taken out of the property owners that live near that development. So, I go with the side that when is enough is enough. And you are the advocate for the citizen. You have the privileged position to hear the citizen. I thank you for taking this off the consent agenda so I can speak on this. But you're the advocate for the citizens to say, okay, what is reasonable here? I know it must be Dancing with the Stars night. I'm the only one that showed up from my community, but I do, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak and taking this off the chair, off the consent agenda. I'm not asking all six of you to vote my way. I'm asking four of you to not vote Mr. Sanks' way. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for? Okay. We also have Nancy Sexton was opposed to the item but does not wish to speak. And then Jeanette Blanchard is opposed to the item but does not wish to speak. Do we have any comments back from the applicant?
Thank you Chairman and Commissioners. I would just like to say that Mr. Sexton speaks very well in public and he has a job at Verizon if he'd like one. The issue in regards to the, the issue in regards to the, I understand the proximity issue to the residences. I'd just like to remind from Bob's presentation that we are far in excess of the required setback. And again, remind everyone that these homes are oriented away as purposely designed by the Power Ranch master plan to orientate away from the commercial development in an effort to buffer it already. So, and lastly, the, this, the center is built out, but in a fortunate way, it offers us the opportunity to go in and not prohibit or preclude development from developing the way it should to the south by trying to locate on vacant property and then try to plan around it. So, that's all.
Thank you. Any further comment from staff?
I'd just like to publicly thank Mr. Sexton. He's been really a pleasure to work with as well as Mr. Sanks. Other than that, staff stands by its staff report.
Thank you. Okay. Close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and motion. Vice Chairman Sipple?
I would make a motion if there's no discussion. Okay. I move to approve UP 14-02.
Subject to, subject to staff.
Subject to staff's report?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Sipple, with a conditional use permit, it's important to reference the findings of fact and to make the findings of fact to go along with it.
Ah, yes. I don't. All right. I take my motion off and will allow someone else to do that. I don't have that pulled up in front of me. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Mudi.
Recommend a motion, make the findings of fact and approve UP 14-12 Verizon, PHO, Cortina, a request for a conditional use permit to allow wireless communication facility. Is that enough?
Findings of fact as presented in the staff report?
Yes. The subject, yes. Findings of fact as presented in the report.
Do I have?
I was waiting for the Vice Chair to second it since he wanted to make the first motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mudi and a second by Vice Chairman Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Pass the 6-0.
We thank you for coming down though, Mr. Sexton, for your presentation.
Brings us to item number 12, UP, oh, actually, take a quick five-minute break and then Thank you. I'd, I don't know if I closed the public hearing, but make sure we're open for the public hearing and have item number 12, UP 15-04, the Fox Cigar Bar. Nicole McCartney? Cardy?
Good evening Chairman, members of the commission. Nicole McCartney with the Planning Department. I'm here tonight to discuss the Fox Cigar Bar and the use permit request for this site. The site is located on the northwest corner of Val Vista Drive and Williamsfield Road. It's in the shopping center zoning district. There's single-family eight directly to the west of the, of the subject site. Across Williamsfield Road to the south is regional commercial and there's general commercial over to the east across Val Vista. The reason this particular business needs a use permit is that shopping center requires a use permit for certain types of non-traditional businesses, which a smoking lounge does fall into. And that, that is why we're here tonight for this request. So, again, the non-traditional business separation requirements are 1,000 feet minimum to other non-traditional businesses, which this site does meet, and also 13, 20 feet to schools, which this site also meets. I've also shown some of the distances behind the site to the nearby residential. It's about 75 feet to the property line and about 95 feet to the closest house. This is taken from the entrance to the patio area, which is here in the center of the two suites. They occupy suite 105 right here and suite 104 here and the patio area in between. And there is access from both the rear of the site and the front of the site. So, the area shown in blue on the floor plan is suite 105. It's about 1,700 square feet. This was the original part of the business that originally Fox Cigar Bar took over back in 2008. The area shown in orange is the expansion area, the patio and the new members lounge, which was opened about a year ago in suite 104. So, just to summarize the business, it currently occupies two tenant suites and a patio area in the existing commercial and office center. It's approximately 4,800 square feet between those three areas. The services provided are smoking lounge, tobacco sales, and alcohol sales. The hours of operation are 10:00 AM to midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturdays. To go through the history a little bit on the business, suite 105, as I mentioned, was occupied, was originally Casa Fuma, a tobacco sales store. Back in 2008, there was no use permit requirement for smoking lounges. In 2009, Fox, in May of 2009, Fox Cigar Bar leased this suite and continued the same use. However, in July of 2009, we did have a zoning code amendment, the one I discussed earlier, where now a use permit is required for smoking lounges. And that was fine, the, the business was now non-conforming use in that suite. It wasn't until the business expanded into suite 104 to the north that is when it triggered the need for a use permit. And I just want to point out that staff is a little unsure of when the patio actually was built or began to be used. There were no building permits pulled for the patio improvements, so we don't have any record of exactly when that started to be used as the smoking lounge. In early 2015, the applicant met with staff. We kind of went over all of the, our concerns, his concerns, and walked through the process of what we needed to do to bring the site into compliance. This is why we're here tonight. Part of it is the use permit. Just to show you some site photos, the photos on the left and the right are of the patio area taken from inside the parking lot looking west. So, the homes would be back behind here, behind the six-foot wall. This picture is taken from inside the patio area looking out into the parking lot. And this is the front of the suite. This would be suite 105 and this would be suite 104 over here with the patio in between. And some more pictures from the rear of the site. This is the driveway that separates the residential here, a landscape buffer. And then this would be the entrance into the rear patio. It's a closer look of one of the rear gates and again, the six-foot wall there and another gate on the more northern side. Staff is recommending approval. There's a couple conditions related to the minor design review of, for the patio improvements and also building permits for unpermitted work. However, we did make this recommendation prior to receiving several emails and letters from the public. So, I want to take a chance and, and explain what public input we have heard on this. We heard from residents from nine adjacent homes that are in opposition of the, of the use. Their primary concern is the smell of smoke in their yards and their homes. Additionally, we heard concerns about Additionally, we heard concerns about not being able to enjoy their outdoors, not being able to open their windows, health and allergy concerns, and also noise and loitering in the, in that rear parking lot area. So after being, you know, enlightened to those concerns, staff kind of discussed some different options that we could present to you tonight regarding the patio that seemed to be the specific concern of the residents is the outside smoke. And so we put together a few different options on the patio that, that you could talk about tonight if you'd like. Moving the patio, maybe relocating it closer to the inside of the parking lot, probably something we would have suggested had we seen this, you know, prior to it being built. Enclosing the patio, limiting the use of the patio, maybe a follow-up hearing with some review to see how, if they do any mitigation factors to see how that's working for the neighborhood, or denial of the use permit would, would possibly have the patio removed. So that is all for my presentation. I know that applicant, the owner, is here tonight, and if you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Blazer.
You mentioned that possibly relocating the patio or moving it closer to, closer to the parking lot maybe would have been something you would have required had they pulled a permit and gotten a conditional use permit originally?
Having looked, Commissioner Blazer, having looked at this site, I have the aerials show, or the floor plan shown here, there probably would be, have been some potential to, to utilize this space in front more since they do occupy both of these suites. It is set back towards the rear. We probably would have considered the residential in the rear and tried to, tried to pull that forward as much as we could.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question when it comes to building permits. So the original design, we, do we know at this time if the, the walls and anything that encompasses today that site work, was that permitted with the original site or was that permitted or non-permitted work?
Chairman Ailer, we don't have any building permits for the structures that are on-site with patio right now.
Okay. So, or the walls, some of the stuff that we saw, the...
For, for the, for the gates and that sort of stuff. The, the wall was here with the original design of the building. It was served as a breezeway. There just weren't gates there separating.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Bloomfield?
Nicole, you said that you had created kind of your, the staff recommendation prior to receiving the, the input from the surrounding citizens. Does it change or affect your, your approval rating, so to speak, at this point?
Chairman and Commissioner Bloomfield, we, we did make the findings a fact, and I think we always try to balance the public comment as well. I think their concerns are specifically related to finding a fact number four, the enjoyment of their property, health concerns, that sort of thing. So I, I do think that some of the ideas here about the options to consider with the patio could mitigate that gray area of whether or not that finding effect can, can still be met.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is applicant here? And if you can bring your name and town of residence.
Hello, my name's Mitchell Fox. I own Fox Cigar Bar. Some of this information is kind of new to me. Tonight, I wasn't really expecting anybody in opposition, to be honest. The patio has been there for, since I acquired the business, so there's never been any complaints. There's never been any issues. Police are never called. There's never been any complaints filed with Smoke Free Arizona. We're in complete compliance with all the, the state laws. I don't, I don't really know how to, you know, you know, there's no way to really move the patio. If we move it closer to the, the parking lot, we'd have problems probably meeting the requirements with Smoke Free Arizona to be 25 feet away from any other entrances. That's, that's pretty much, that's it. I mean, I don't know what other options I'd have. The patio's been there the entire time.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Whitman?
So are, are you saying that you've been operating on the patio since the time that you were first, in the first building before you expanded into the second building?
Correct, yes.
And that was back in 2012?
No, that was prior to that. It was prior to, it was prior to the code being changed. When it was Casa Fuma, he was operating on the, the patio. So this has been in use. When I acquired the business, the patio was part of the business. It's, it's always been used. I mean, it's been years that it's been there. This is the first I've, you know, heard if there'd be any, any issue to it. Like I said, we've never had a problem. I've never had a complaint at all. So I mean, we're, we're stringent, you know, on our, our compliance with Smoke Free Arizona to, to make sure we meet all the requirements and be far enough away from, from homes and front doors to businesses, things like that.
I think the question that we have that we're trying to figure out up here is, it appears as though maybe the, the additional building as well as that open patio area was not approved as part of the use permit process and has to be approved, and so that's just something that we have to consider up here.
Well, the way I understand it, though, the use permit was changed after I acquired the business. So yes, I'm expanding into an additional suite, but the patio was already being used.
But I don't think the patio was approved as part of...
Well, the, the structure that I built on the patio wasn't, but the patio was.
All right, the patio was there, but it wasn't approved necessarily for the use, the cigar use outside as an outdoor patio for that use?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Whitman, it, it sounds as if the applicant believes he can provide evidence that the patio was being used as a smoking lounge prior to the requirement for conditional use permit. If that's the case and he can provide that evidence, then it would become a question of whether the addition of the patio could be considered an expanded or intensified use of that area. And without that evidence before, before you right now, that's not a legal determination that council is able to provide.
Okay. I need to continue.
I guess my question on, when you say use a patio, just for determination, are you saying that you had tables and chairs out there and no defined area to the patio? You just went out there, didn't lock them up? You brought the chairs back in every day? And, and you went in and out with them?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It was used every, every day. It was, it was part of the use on the, the building when I acquired the business.
Commissioner Sipple?
So my question is then, so you guys were using it, did you then put those gates up and the, and the awning that we see there? That's what you put in?
Yes, yes. Correct. The awning is what I, I added to that. And that's where, you know, we got into, to this point right now. I was just trying to get permits for, for heaters.
Yeah.
And that brought up this, so.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
And you'll have more time after we have the public. Okay, so that brings us to the, the public comment. Have three cards, two of them wish, do not wish to speak. So we have Tom Flowers wishes to speak and notes the email that he sent to Nicole. Is Tom Flowers? I'm sorry? Okay, he states it was covered in his email. Also, we have Brian Sims, which is opposed to item but does not wish to speak. And then we have Brenda Buzzard, and she's opposed to the item but does not wish to speak. Also sent an email on Monday. We did receive nine emails from different members of the public on this matter, all basically opposed. So I'm, yeah, if you wish to come up and speak and if you can. You, you had the card, you had a card already? Okay, great. If you state your name and town of residence.
Hi, I'm Brenda Buzzard. And I, I didn't really want to speak because I knew I wouldn't speak well, but I feel compelled to. So some of the things, I, I have some comments to make.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't like public speaking.
No, take your time, that's quite fine.
I seem so friendly, but you're scaring me to death. So...
We don't like public speaking either, so.
Thank you.
You're at home.
First of all, can I just ask, can I ask a couple of questions based on what I, I read in the information that I received?
If you address us, yes. We may need staff to intervene.
Okay. One of the questions I have is that in here, they refer to it as a standalone. What, what does that mean exactly? A standalone cigar bar or, or smoking lounge? A standalone smoking lounge? Standalone to me, it sounds like it's separated from buildings, and so I wanted to try to get clarification.
Linda, Ms. Edwards?
Chairman, commissioners and residents, standalone smoking lounge is the business. For instance, if you had a very large restaurant with different components or specialty areas, you could have a, a smoking lounge as part of a very large restaurant or event center. This is a smoking lounge, so therefore it's a standalone smoking lounge.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. And then I also wanted to ask a question based on the information that was provided and Nicole had addressed about the distance from non-traditional uses is 1,000 feet. I don't see anything in here that addresses homes. Well, I mean, we're certainly not, we're within 1,000 feet, obviously, but why isn't there something that says that they have to be a certain distance from homes?
Right, that was part of a code amendment that went through the Town of Gilbert and the, or non-traditional businesses. There are certain categories of types of non-traditional businesses, and the intent, I think at the time, and staff can, can correct me if I'm wrong and add to it, but was to make sure that there wasn't a clustering of those similar types of businesses in one particular area so as to overwhelm a neighborhood or an area. So they wanted to make sure that they were separated from each other. So it's not necessarily a, a concern, or at the time, wasn't a concern against residents, it was a concern against clustering, a potential clustering, and I think against also certain locations, locating those types of businesses adjacent to other sensitive type businesses such as daycares and churches and things of that nature.
Okay. And now can I just make a couple of comments? And thank you for answering my questions, I appreciate that. And I did send an email and I did speak with Nicole, and I, I think that it, it's so concerning to me because we have had concerns and we're just not ones to make a big deal out of things. And we kind of expected that the town looks after us and whatnot, and we knew that there would probably been something that allowed them to go in. I vaguely remember receiving something about it, never saw anything that described anything about an outside use, otherwise I would have been concerned, but thinking about an enclosed area with a cigar bar, it just didn't occur to me that that would be a problem for me as a homeowner, and I'm, one of the homes that's right behind there. We get the smoke in our house, the smell, you know, it's like our kids, we have guests over, it's like, we have to close up everything. It's, it's really, it's really sad that we have to live that way. And the gentleman, Mr. Fox, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who you are, but when he was saying about not receiving any complaints, we, we didn't complain, and I said that earlier. I did however, a year or two ago, I, I may have called the town, I don't recall, but if I did, I was directed to go to the internet and, because that's where I ended up, was the, the Town of Gilbert, and tried to read through the code, everything that I could find having to do with noise and smoke. I didn't think that I had any rights. It seemed like, well, I think that they're meeting everything, and so I didn't pursue it. So, you know, shame on me and, you know, I should have done more, and, and I didn't, and I hope this is my opportunity to do more. And then the other thing I just wanted to say is that, and this is just a, a personal comment, because I do have, you know, friends that smoke and coworkers that smoke, none of them, and it's just them, but none of them stay in smoking rooms in hotels, none of them smoke in their homes, none of them do that. And, you know, so it's even worse that, you know, here we are, a non-smoking family, raised our kids to, you know, have a, you know, a non-appreciation for the smoke and the health hazards of that, and now we're being the ones that are being influenced by that. You know, obviously, I don't know if the people who go to this cigar bar live in that area, you know, where I do, but I'm, I just don't think that they would want a cigar bar next to their homes either, because most of them don't smoke in their homes. You know, but now we have to have the cigar smell inside our home. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. We have a quick question for you, though, if, if you'd like to take a question. Vice President Sipple?
All I need is a number. What year did you guys move into your home?
2004.
Okay, thank you.
Another quick question. So I assume based on your comments, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that you're not necessarily opposed to the cigar, the cigar bar itself, you're just opposed to the smoking in the patio area?
As far as I know, that's the only thing that's causing us the problem. The, the noise is, is pretty bad. You know, I, I try not to worry about the noise as much as the smoke. The smoke bothers me. The noise is loud, they, I think, and I don't want, I've never been over there, I think they must have outside TVs and stuff. I can, I can see the TV from my, my home. I can watch the football game going, and I can hear it. And in the, like this last weekend, they had some activity going on, and so it was hard to even enjoy being out by the pool because they had, I don't know, announcers doing stuff. I, I don't even know what they were doing, but it was, that type of stuff doesn't bother me that much because I assume and expect it's a one-time thing. It's the, you know, every evening, every weekend evening, having to listen to the noise, listening to people standing out by the, there's a trash bin someplace out there, a big, you know, dumpster thing, I, I think, because I can hear them emptying trash, I can hear them talking out there, laughing, throwing beer bottles into the dumpster. It's like, we're just not that far away. It's, it's very, I'm so dry-mouthed. We're very, very close. Probably more than you wanted me to say.
All right, thank you. I guess that was all the cards from the public. Does the applicant wish to add anymore?
Well, of course, I want to be a good neighbor. I do everything I possibly can to deal with noise. Like I kind of said before, we've never had an issue. No one's ever said anything about a noise problem. The police have never been called for any noise issues. I'm very cautious, you know, about that. No one is behind our, as far as I know, no one's ever behind the building. Loitering, we, we kind of police that. If it is, it's a, it's a one-time occurrence kind of a thing. I don't think anybody would think that's a regular thing. I, I, I don't know what else other than, you know, Smoke Free Arizona regulates all the, the requirements, and we meet all those requirements as far as the, the smoking issues are, are concerned. You know, that's, you know, we, we want to be in compliance with everything. So that's, you know, that's, that's what I try and do. That's what I do do.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Oh, we, we have a quick question for you, sorry. Commissioner Bloomfield?
Mr. Fox, you have a couple of gates in the back, and I presume that most of your, most of your clientele access the gate from the parking lot in the front, and that's your primary maneuver, right?
That's, yeah, that's the way.
People generally don't go in and out the back?
They do not. It's, it's for emergencies.
Okay.
And that's it. It's, it's to control, to make sure that no one goes out there with liquor, too.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Well, I, I think right now we're going to discuss it a little bit on the dais and maybe come to a not, a continuance maybe tonight, so we'll just save the comment for later. Anyway, we have staff, Nicole McCartney.
I think the applicant has requests that would like a continuance tonight to, as Linda mentioned, to, to look into that patio area more. I don't think staff's position, you know, the use permit will still be required at some point. They did expand into the members lounge, so we know that, that requirement is there. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question for staff.
Okay, Commissioner Meehan?
You had a different graphic up there that had the blue and the orange outlining suite 104 and 105. And I'm just wanting for clarification, the, the suite 104, the timeline when that was leased, and then suite 105, the time that that was the addition to the business, just trying to understand how that timeline maybe follows the changing in the rules and, and maybe the patio wasn't used when suite 104... wasn't used when Suite 104 was initially leased to begin with, but at least with this graphic, it seems that it's tied to Suite 105 and therefore the rights to use it may be more along the timeline of Suite 105 and if there's any impact there. And maybe this is moot if we're going to continue, but that was something I was wanting to understand further.
Chairman Ailer and Commissioner Moody, the blue is the original suite and this was back in 2008, was Casa Fuma and purchased by Fox Cigar Bar, continued the use. And again, we're on, we know the canopy wasn't there, we're unaware of what the patio was being used as back then or how formal it was. Sounds like it was just the tables and the chairs. Then in 2014, let me just double check my date here, early 2014, they expanded into Suite 104 for the members lounge. So now this is, this is, you know, the whole, the whole piece now.
I guess I was just trying to understand from the business side, the leasing, was the patio part of the original business lease or was it just an adjacent space that was being used, whether it was being paid for or not? And does that have any bearing on the rights to use the patio tied to the original use or not?
If you'd mind, I just want to ask the applicant real quick if he knows if he was, you know, paying or leasing that space specifically.
Yeah, it was, it was part of Suite 104, the original suite.
Okay. He says it was part of the original suite.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Blazer.
What happens in the meantime if there's a continuance with the, with the current business?
Commissioner Blazer, the business is just currently operating as is, so I believe it would continue to operate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Sipper.
Timeframe we would put on a continuance, I mean, we could continue it for 10 years.
I would look to just the next, next meeting.
Next meeting, is that what we're thinking? Yeah, okay.
May 6.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. And so I'll close the public meeting and bring it back to the dais for discussion, motion if anyone would like.
Chairman?
Yes.
I propose that we continue this item to the May 6 planning commission meeting for further input from the applicant and from council and staff.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Whitman and a second from Commissioner Bloomfield for a continuance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 6-0 for continuance. Onto May 6 agenda. Thank you and thank you for coming out and we'll be listening to this again on May 6.
And Brenda, you did really well.
Item number 13 is UP- or UP 15-02, which is the East Valley Patient Wellness Center. And we have Nathan Williams.
Thank you Chairman Ailer, members of the commission. Appreciate you having me. So UP 1502, East Valley Patient Wellness, we visited about this last month on a study session item and back before you now for a decision. So I'll just give you a brief rundown or jog your memory here. It's about an acre in size, it's located kind of north and west of Power and Nunley Drive here. So there's American Furniture Warehouse, Power Road, Nunley, and then 182nd Place. So again, just this will have to be fully improved by the applicant to the Town of Gilbert standards and they'll run utilities and so on and so forth. That'll have to be demonstrated prior to DR approval, just for the record. This is a one-story dispensary, it's about just over 1,500 square feet in area, you can see it there. It is a single access point from 182nd and it has some refuse enclosures. There's a western half to this parcel that will not be improved whatsoever, there's no phasing or anything like that. This is just simply what it'll be and they'll dustproof that and provide some landscaping as well. Again, reviewed by the DR board. So a medical marijuana dispenser obviously requires a use permit. In that, it requires to meet the typical four findings of fact for any use permit. In addition to that, there's general requirements, 15 of them, there's security plan, there's separation distances, all these other criteria that a dispenser has to comply with. The applicant has demonstrated that they've met all these requirements, the security plan has been approved by our police department, reviewed and approved by our police department. There's a single access point on the southern building elevation that everyone will come in and out of, deliveries will happen there with, deliveries will be, have security with them and they'll occur prior to the opening of the facility. Use permit, or the land development code requires that hours of operation be eight to six, they're going to comply with that. So essentially all those criteria that we have to evaluate approving a use permit for such a facility has been met and the applicant has demonstrated that they met that. And essentially we really have no concerns with those, in reviewing those criteria. I just provided some of these exhibits so you could see them. There's the landscape plan, just to give you an idea of what that would potentially look like. There is the separation distance map that the applicant provided, as well as our GIS department does as well, just to demonstrate compliance. And, oh, one other thing I wanted to mention, it's, so it is surrounded by a number of vacant or existing industrial uses. A lot of this is actually still in the county. These three parcels here and all of this are actually what's in the town and then the remainder is pretty much is in the county. Did receive one letter or one phone call from a neighbor here, this northeastern parcel that was concerned with the use on the facility or on the property using the facility. But anyway, other than that, we've received no opposition at this point. And as you can see on the area, there's some existing buildings and so forth, obviously that'll all be removed and a new building constructed. I believe someone asked me last month, this will be a permanent structure, not a temporary structure. So there's that as well. With that, I'll take any questions or comments.
I have.
Thank you. Oh, no, Commissioner Bloomfield, please.
Nathan, last, last month, we talked about it in the study session and there was a question about the access and the easement up through the middle of that. Has that been resolved and taken care of at this point?
Richard Bloomfield, that is, they're still working with our town staff on that, but we're conditioning the use permit to be, that be taken care of and demonstrated before design review board approval. So they will have to demonstrate to our, you know, compliance with those legal access requirements that meet our legal and engineering departments' requirements prior to any DR approval.
I saw that conditioned, I just wanted to get an update.
Yeah.
On the way through that process, so.
Yeah, maybe Jack has an update, but.
No, that's enough update, that's all I needed to know. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Roy.
Thanks.
Does the applicant here at this point, can please come down and state your name and town of residence for the record?
Good evening Chairman Oler and Commissioner members. My name is Nicole Thompson, I'm with Associated Architects and I reside in Mesa, Arizona. And we can answer any questions you have for us.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Well, that was good.
We're amendable with all of the staff recommendations and we are working with the town attorney on the easement issues.
Okay, thank you. We do have a card from the public, which is Minnie Humber wishes to speak.
My name is Minnie Holmberg, I live in Chandler, but we own the property directly east of this lot. And my only question was the road and I think they answered it, that they will be responsible for the entire road up to the end of their property, is that what I'm understanding? On both sides of the road?
Staff.
On 182nd Place, they will be responsible from going to Nunley up to the end of their property on both sides of that road, the entire thing is their cost to take care of that?
Yeah, let me get an answer from staff behind you.
That's correct. So they'll, they'll be improving from here to the, this distance up to.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the cards we have on this item. Does the applicant wish to add anything? Okay, thank you. And staff? No, thank you. Let's bring it back to the dais, close the public hearing and have any discussion or motions.
Chairman, do you want a motion?
I would like a motion. Unless someone has any points for discussion.
Recommend, make the, recommended motion would be to make the findings of fact and approve UP 1502, East Valley Patient Wellness Center, request for conditional use permit for approximately one acre of real property located at 952 South 182nd Place, north and west of the northwest corner of 182nd Place and Nunley, to allow a medical marijuana dispensary in the light industrial zoning district subject to conditions related to public health, safety and welfare.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Whitman and a second by Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 6-0. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to items and cases, accompanying cases, item 14 and 15, which is GP 14-10 and Z 14-28, which is Legacy Point at Seville. Mr. Williams.
Thank you Chairman Ailer. So we have Seville Track T, also known as Legacy Point at Seville. It's just over 19 acres here in the center of the Seville master plan, it's the remaining parcel to be developed. So again, you can see it here, it's surrounded by golf course, it's adjacent to the country or the community, yeah, country club, I guess you'd call it, or what do you call it? Golf, golf club, community center or something. So it's adjacent to that and again, it's currently, well, here's an enlargement. So that parcel is accessed by really only one access from Chandler Heights Clubhouse Drive here. Let me give you a brief rundown of the, so there's a maintenance facility here, there's the clubhouse here and obviously surrounding golf courses. Seville master plan is predominantly SF 6, 7, 8, some 10, but those are typically the zoning districts that are a part of Seville. What the applicant is asking for is a general plan amendment from 1 to 2, which is now obviously to 2 to 3 and 1/2 dwelling units an acre and rezoning from SF 15 PAD to SF 7 PAD. So here's a graphic provided by the applicant that kind of shows again, the zone exhibit and the general plan exhibit of the area as well as, you know, they have an aerial overlay here. And again, you can see clubhouse drive will be the main access to the facility, that's a private drive after this point here. And then obviously this will be a gated community, it's anticipated this will be a gated community with private streets and so forth. So here's a development plan, I'll kind of, you saw this a couple of months ago in February, I'll give you a little rundown on the, on some of the changes. Here's the somewhat revised development plan. Changes include, these blue lines you may notice, these are, the applicant has provided us a little bit better graphic on where the trail points would be, that was a question we had at the study session and it's somewhat of a concern. You know, we wanted multiple pedestrian access points. Pedestrians use this site now to kind of get to the Seville Golf Club. So they want to continue those access points and they've done a good job of demonstrating where those will be. Those coming from maybe the north, northwest would come this way and then from the northeast would come through the development in this manner. One item was, the last time we talked about these being gated, they're going to be open now, they're calling it pedestrian portals, so they'll be open for folks to walk through all the time to get to the golf club and walk across the site. Another change I'd mentioned is that this lot here has shifted to the east, northeast a bit to make room for a, for a sewer easement across the site and at the same time, provide a more direct pedestrian route through the site. But the site has some slope issues and bringing in more turns and adjustments to the sewer line is really not feasible, so they had to take a most direct route they could across the site. Again, 61 lots, overall density of like 3.18. We'll go through some of the, some of the specifics here. Minimum lot size will be 8,750 square feet, there will be lots that are bigger than that, but that's the minimum size, minimum dimension 70 by 125. And so it'll be in excess of SF 7 of course. In terms of the deviations, those were some of the, really the main concerns we had last month. The applicant has gone back based on our comments, your comments and looking at their, you know, home plans as they refine them and kind of streamline the request. So it's pretty basic now. I've kind of taken the graphic here, and this is a graphic that's in your staff report, but provided here as well and it shows you, you know, what is existing today on the site with SF 15, what's conventional SF 7 and what other SF 7 zoning districts in the Seville master plan are allowed to do. And then obviously what the applicant's requesting here. So as you could see, pretty much all the deviations are equivalent or less intense than what is approved for other SF 7 zoning in Seville. One of the main points of concern was a three-foot stagger. And so just this week, when I wrote this report, this wasn't the case, but just this week we met with the applicant, as they're looking at their home plans, they determined it to be more manageable to do a three-foot stagger, which is required by code and is part of every, you know, everything else in Seville has that stagger as well. So there was some wording here, get my laser out. So previously we did, they were requesting no stagger and some very specific wording for each dwelling unit, to have some differentiation along the front facade and create that diversity that we always ask for. So the applicant felt that it would just be much simpler to go with a three-foot stagger to meet the code requirements or, you know, coincide with them and then remove this language. So essentially that's what they've done when we met with them on Monday and that's why I provided you some revised conditions there. We've kind of basically simplified the request quite a bit. And so I just wanted to kind of point that out. Another item I'd mentioned is that it's going to be single-story only, this is a kind of request for the neighbors, when we had neighborhood meetings, there was some input from the neighbors, they want their views blocked. So that was a result of that, it'll be 25 feet high, one-story buildings maximum, again, excess lots and all the other setbacks will remain larger or the same as what's allowed in other Seville SF 7 zoning districts. So that's essentially it for the conditions. We also amended a condition D slightly to comment on the HOA, so the applicant will either tie into the existing Seville HOA, which is anticipated, or they would have to create their own, but our understanding is they'll tie in with the existing Seville HOA like all the other parcels in Seville. So these are your, basically here's the new rundown of what's being requested, provided the open space plan for you, the preliminary platonic open space plan is in for review now, this kind of gives you a better idea of what it would look like in terms of build out. Here's this pedestrian portal we talked about and the front access gate, so you can see what that is anticipated to be designed like. And then these are just walls and kind of trail connection points. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for staff at this time? Okay, great. Is the applicant here at this moment? Can you step forward, name and town of residence for the record?
Absolutely. I'm Cameron Carter with the Rose Law Group here on behalf of TW Lewis. And if you bear with me for one second, I've got a presentation. And if you bear with me for one second, I've got a presentation. That I can't find. There it is. Chairman Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And I do want to thank staff. Nathan's presentation was very thorough. I'll quickly move through some slides because I think a lot of the exhibits and things are duplicative. But we're here tonight. The project is Legacy Point at Seville. As Nathan had mentioned, this is the last piece within the Seville master plan community to develop. Give you a little bit of history. TW Lewis actually has history, a proven tracker because of Seville. They just built Sienna. This is our request. So what we're looking at, let me see if I can find the laser here. Oops, which button is it? Oh, we got two different, perfect. Okay, so this site is here in the middle. The Sienna property is just to the west. And TW Lewis just built within that phase of Seville. So they're a high-end builder, quality homes, consistent with price points that are throughout the Seville community. This site is called Track T2, and you may be familiar with that. I know this parcel originally, as part of the Seville master plan, was planned to be commercial. In fact, it was developed or planned to be developed as a boutique hotel resort, a much more intense use than the residential zoning we're talking about today. I think that's important because the hotel plan didn't pan out, whoops. The hotel plan didn't pan out. The market just wasn't there for that. And so this property has remained undeveloped for a number of years. It's gone through a couple of different rezonings. And people have looked at different plans to decide and figure out what was feasible here. But ultimately, what's feasible is exactly what's been built in Seville. Residential homes, high-end residential homes. And so what we're proposing tonight is a gated community that will be consistent with and fit within and harmonious to the existing Seville community. So the general plan request that we're making tonight, as Nathan had mentioned, it's currently one to two dwelling units per acre. As you can see, surrounding the subject property, most of Seville is already, you can't tell because it's really small, but it's already at the two to three and a half dwelling units per acre. So the change that we're requesting is completely consistent with everything else that's in Seville, what's surrounding it. The rezoning request that we're talking about tonight, we're proposing SF 7, single-family, 7,000-square-foot minimum lots. We're actually exceeding that. But it's consistent with the mix of zoning categories, districts that you see within the Seville master plan. Ultimately, with the 61 lots that are proposed, these will ensure that the total lot count stays within the maximum unit count for the Seville master plan community and the maximum density for that community. So here, as you've seen, this is a copy of our development plan map. The red lines show pedestrian access, those corridors that will be preserved, unlocked, so pedestrians can get through. They're currently walking across really this undeveloped vacant property to get to the golf clubhouse and the other recreational amenities that are down in that area. We've tried to work closely with neighbors in responding to their questions, their concerns, the issues that they brought up, and this is an example of that. So just the specs here, we're talking about 61 lots, 3.18 dwelling units per acre, minimum lot size, 8750. Within the Legacy Point community, they'll provide 10% open space, which is consistent with Seville. Seville, in fact, far exceeds that and probably in the town is one of the most, has the highest amount of open space that's usable and amenitized. So this exhibit just shows the green areas or open space areas, as you can see. So one of the points that's unique about this property is that the subject site has direct access to Chandler Heights Boulevard via Clubhouse Drive, which is a private road that is currently used to access the maintenance facility. It will be used, it's a straight shot basically up to the north to Chandler Heights. Development standards, as staff has already pointed out, I'm showing here just in red line strikeout. TW Lewis will comply with the three-foot minimum stagger requirement. There's no need for the five-foot recessing that had previously, as they've been through the design of their product, it wasn't necessary. So just to point out a few things, and again, like staff had pointed out, TW Lewis is proposing to exceed the minimums that we see in other communities within Seville. An example of that is the one-story, the single-story limitation. Currently, what's allowed, if I can point out to you here, currently what's allowed is actually, it's not on this table, but they can build a two-story, 35-foot product by limiting themselves to a one-story, 25-foot-tall home. They're actually lowering sightlines and retaining the site views from adjacent properties by 10 feet. That's important because one of the things we've heard from neighbors, specifically those up to the north of the property, is they want to maintain their views. And so TW Lewis is willing to do that. These are deviations, just to point those out, deviating on some setbacks in the front or the side and the rear. One of the things that TW Lewis prides itself on and has found important is that its customers really want a large backyard space. And so they're able to provide that. So to reiterate, TW Lewis, they build a high-quality product. This is going to be an exclusive golf community. It's really the centerpiece of Seville. I've thrown up here, not thrown up here, I put up some preliminary conceptual sketches. These are examples of the product types. TW Lewis built in Sienna. But they've designed products specifically for this parcel because it is special. It's a little bit different. It's going to be a little bit higher end. One of the things they've looked at and that has been expressed by neighbors is how are values in this community going to relate to values in other places where, you know, we've owned for a couple of years or just built? TW Lewis expects that values here will be 15 to 20% higher than the adjacent areas. So as Nathan has also talked about, the modification of stipulation D, this project is actually already incorporated into the Seville HOA. So it's already part of it. The HOA will own the streets, they'll own the common areas, they'll maintain all of those. And so, and you have that language as part of the supplementary package. It just says that we will either create an HOA, which doesn't need to happen, will be part of the Seville HOA. Also clarified, and you've got this in your supplement, comply with a three-foot stagger, eliminate the recess requirement. And just want to reiterate, we've been through an extensive citizen participation process. We've held neighborhood meetings. We've reached out to neighbors. I know we have some here tonight. We've talked with the HOA and the golf course operator. We've been working with them for years. One of the things that I'll just touch on, as we've responded to the neighbors and the HOA, one of the things we're able to solve was a question, neighbors had raised a question about drainage in this area. And I want to skip ahead. Let's see. Oh, it's too far back. No, that one does it, actually. So this shows the direct access from Chandler Heights. But one of the questions that came up from neighbors to the north was a question about drainage and the site. And this site slopes a little bit and how it will drain. The Seville community is all designed to drain into the golf course. All the retention is there. This project will drain right into, it'll follow that. A couple of years back, there was a flooding event and some of the neighbors expressed concern about, you know, will development of this site affect flooding? How will it affect the drainage? We've actually worked closely with the town, with the HOA, with the golf course operator to find out what caused that flooding. Turned out it was some pipe coverts that hadn't been maintained. There was one that was crushed and broken. That subsequently been repaired and the HOA is committed and does maintain those now. So that flooding and that drainage issue is really a non-issue. So with that, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? No? All right, thank you. I do have some cards from the public. I'll start with the ones who wish to speak. I have a card from William Dumpey. Says he's in favor, wish to speak. Drainage is not adequate subdivision should provide for water retention on the land. Oh, I'm sorry. A lot of people get my name wrong, so.
I can imagine. I've lived there since 2003. And if I could get that picture back, he showed up the golf course there where the golf course is supposed to be the flood plain, I'd like to point out a few things.
Sure.
I realize that golf courses are made to take care of rainwater in that particular area. I've built, I've had a few subdivisions that I've done myself. First of all, they haven't mentioned, this is the highest point on the whole property, the whole golf course. The clubhouse is built on a hill. Everything from this property here, where the clubhouse is, flows down this direction, which is north. So there's about 17, 18 acres of ground, which does percolate right now to some extent. And then if there's a heavy rain, it goes down here. And like I said, I've been there since 2003. The clubhouse was built in the end of 2003, 2004. So I've seen every rainstorm that has hit there. And I live right over off of Meadow View, right over here. And the water comes down off of this hill. They've got a canyon here that they've dug way below the golf course. It's probably 20 feet deep. I keep thinking that somebody's going to drive a car in there and we'll never find them. And that's supposed to be where these dry wells are. And yes, maybe they did get a little dirt in them at one time. But every rain we've had since I've lived there fills this area up, overflows into the golf course, goes over into the next fairway, because this is all downhill. This fairway is higher than this fairway. And it goes right into, and the only time that the city ever came out and did anything about it was the last big flood we had. And it went into some people's houses over here, in their backyards and in their garages. And I'm greatly concerned. This is the maintenance shed right here. In my opinion, as a builder, I'm not going to build a house right next to a maintenance shed where in the morning, they've got lawnmowers and tractors and all these equipment starting up to go out to the golf course. And they go this way, they go this way. And I'm requesting or asking or asking, I've talked to them about it and they don't want to do it, I assume, because they're going to take up lots that they could sell. But most developers have to provide for retention in their own area. I realize that maybe there's an exception because this is a golf course. But still, this is a hill. All the water is going to flow down this way. Why couldn't they take a couple of lots here and recess them and make water retention and put in a playground or something for the kids? That's all I'm asking for. I have no problem with their homes that they're building. They look to be very nice. And I'm just asking for some neighborhood cooperation to put in a couple of retention areas. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a quick question for you, since you've been able to see a lot of the rainstorms through there. You mentioned on the edge of the property to the north, there's a gully, a canyon, the 20-foot depth.
Yeah, it's right there.
Does that...
Starts right here and runs all the way up here. And the only thing I can think is maybe they can dig it 10 feet deeper to hold some of that water, but that doesn't make sense.
But does, so you say that overfills and then keeps running?
It fills right here, goes across this fairway. This is a high point. This is a little, it goes down in the kind of a gully here and then up into the green. So this is low. The water fills up here. There's a lake here, lake here. It goes, this goes downhill from the fairway here to the next fairway. And that fills up, and then it overflows here and goes into the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have John Seaman.
Yeah, I'm John Seaman, and I live at 403, 4037 East Meadow View Drive. And we've been residents of Seville now for 12 and a half years and watched some of the same things Mr. DePuy talked about. First of all, I'm not against developing the property because I recognized from the very beginning that it was to be developed. I think, though, to really understand what is happening here and why I'm requesting that the zoning not be changed to SF 7, but remain at SF 15, I think you have to understand the history. Some of the history that was left out by Cameron here in that, and I think it's an important piece of the history. Because after the boutique hotel, when it was decided that it was no longer really needed, it wasn't practical and everything else, the current builder there, Shay, the owner of the property, came to the city council and requested that the zoning be changed. He requested that the zoning go to a townhomes, it was 200-plus townhomes he wanted to put on this particular property. It became a very contentious issue with the property owners. And to the extent, this thing went on for months and months and months through the city council process. I'm not sure if any of you were here at that point in time, but I was involved in it at that point in time. Anyway, after that was basically turned down, Shay then decided to go ahead and sell the property. And the property was rezoned. And it became rezoned because, I assume, because of the planning commission, as well as some of the city council members, because it was so contentious, even went down and looked at the property. They decided the best use of that property was to have it maintained at SF 15. When we bought in Seville 12 and a half years ago, one of the things we were told, and one of the things that was, I would say, had a continuity, was that they were going to have different-sized lots in the development, different-sized homes, large, small. But the tendency has been over the last, I would say, five, six years, probably the time when the recession could basically hit in the housing market, was to make smaller homes, less costly homes, smaller lots. Larger homes were put on the smallest lot possible. And I've seen that just kind of continue, and we see a lot of that same thing that's being asked today. So I think you can kind of see why we are looking, or I am actually looking at, trying to maintain, let's say, the SF 15. That's what it was zoned for. We live SF 15. We currently live on Meadow View Drive, and those are SF 15 lots. Across the street from us are SF 15. What we are now going to look at is not 24 to 28 homes, which would be SF 15, but 61 homes with minimal, I would call, play areas, green belts, or anything else. It is basically going to end up looking down from our place at rooftops, concrete. We're going to look at asphalt driveways. The whole property, for the most part, is just covered solidly with these houses. Anyway, I request that, the petition to change it from SF 7 be denied and remain at SF 15.
Thank you. Next I have is Dennis Jonikels. I probably butchered that one more than the first one.
It's Dennis, Dennis Jonitis.
Oh.
Okay, and it's 4053 East Meadow View Drive is where I live, which is in the same area. My concern is more as a citizen within the community and less about the development because I kind of like the idea that it's going to finally be developed because I think it's an eyesore in the community the way it stands. However, what does concern me is the change in density. And we've been in the Seville neighborhood for over 10 years. First, we were in the Enclaves, which is a gated community. That was originally designed to be more for empty nesters was the... That was originally designed to be more for empty nesters was the thought, and that it was going to be more high-end and very few families. It turned out they became starter homes with a lot of families. What I'm concerned about is when you go to a smaller density and you make the housing more affordable, and even though it may be high-end as they're saying, but nevertheless more affordable, I think you encourage more families to be in the area. And as a result, if you look at what the proposed plan is, they do not have any planning there for children to be able to go out to exercise without having to either enter onto the golf course, which is not permitted. So they're either going to have to be playing in the streets, because I think the closest park within the community of Seville is a minimum of a half-mile away. And I doubt that children are going to be walking a half-mile to get to the closest other play area. So what I would really like to ask the commissioner and the chairman to consider here is to have the developer put in some extended play area within this community. And kind of going along and piggybacking on what Mr. Dupuis said, that if in fact drainage is a problem, and I don't know enough about it, but living in the area, I've seen the results of the flooding, not only there, but we've seen it where the water was supposed to run along. I think it's, what is it, the sixteenth and seventeenth hole there? Along the sixteenth and across the fifteenth fairway, we've had lots of erosion take place. And HOA is constantly trying to repair that, but they haven't been able to keep up. As soon as they repair it, the water comes in and wipes it out again. So I think this will be a problem, and I don't think the golf course will handle it. But if what we did is we took a combination of both, put in some additional green space area, not the ten percent they're talking about, which is the fringe areas and having a little bit of decorative, but rather put in a small park or playground for children, this could also serve as an area that would help in water retention. And so I'd like you to consider that in terms of what your deliberations are. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you. Now I have some cards of people who were opposed to item but do not wish to speak. Actually, I have Kevin Ramsey. Would you like to speak? Or, okay, great. Which is opposed to the item. Have Darlene Simon, who's opposed to item. Ruth Bryan German, sorry, opposed to the item. The notes that will diminish value of our area. Donna, Joanna Diaz?
Joanna Diaz.
Joanna Diaz? All right. I was trying to get it right this time. Is opposed to item, not wish to speak. Christine Ramsey, opposed, does not wish to speak. So I have two cards. Tom Fogg is in favor of the item but doesn't wish to speak, but would note that would like to see the elevations of the lots kept to the lowest possible of elevation. And then Joyce Fogg, with the understanding that elevations of this parcel not to be Do we have any comments from the applicant?
Chairman Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity, and we do appreciate everybody who has come out and taken the time to be part of the process here tonight. Just to respond to a few of the items that were addressed, as far as elevations goes, you know, TW Lewis has committed to build a single-story home and no two-story homes in this neighborhood. That drops the potential elevations for these homes by ten feet automatically. So they're committed to do that. They want to maintain sightlines within the Seville community. For drainage, I just want to. Nathan, give a quick. Just want to point out a couple of things we're going to get through. So when we look at, when we look at this community, we have to remember, the community was designed as a master plan. The drainage, the engineers that worked on this, there were drainage studies done. It was all designed to drain through the golf course and to do that. I don't know the depth of the retention basin that is just to the north of this site. I don't think it's twenty feet, but I don't know exactly. But obviously, when we go through and bring grading plans and get those approved through the town, you know, we'll have to show that the drainage works, that it works as it's designed, and that's how it'll be. But we also have to remember, this was planned and developed originally as commercial. The infrastructure, the Boutique Hotel that was planned there is a multi-story structure. I know we're proposing something, I believe, and I think you would agree, is far less intense than a resort hotel. But that infrastructure actually remains. So all of the retention for this site can be handled through the golf course and through that infrastructure that is there today. The system was designed to accommodate that, and this is a far less intense use. The flooding that was talked about, that wasn't caused by tract T-two. It wasn't caused by this site. The development on this site won't cause any further flooding. The cause of that was a broken culvert, and culverts that hadn't been maintained because the HOA didn't know that they were supposed to be maintaining those. Now they do, and they've committed to maintain those into the future. As far as the zoning goes and the variation in zoning, and let me just go back to the map here, the residents that have spoken and that have expressed concerns about, you know, their views in this site, you know, they're located, the distance from this property up to the next closest residence to the north is about, it's five hundred feet at a minimum. And then the further you go to the east, it gets to several hundred feet. So there's significant buffering. We've seen other cases tonight that talk about, you know, adjacency of neighboring property owners and impacts of property. You know, I can't think of a development that is more buffered or that has greater spacing, that accommodates, you know, a mix of uses, and that doesn't impact neighboring properties more than this one. As far as values and values of these properties, we're talking about price points here that are, these are half-million-dollar homes. They're not startup homes by any means. They're not going to be attracting, you know, the youngest families with, that are just having small children. TW Lewis, their target market throughout the valley is, you know, it's the baby movers, it's the retirees, the folks that, it's not startup families. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have for me.
Great. Commissioner Boomfield?
Seville was, Shay Homes has several trilogy, you know, retirement-type communities. And I, as I recall, Seville wasn't necessarily designed to be that. It was intended to be all generations living and or playing together, kind of a thing. With that being said, some of the concerns tonight were, I'm not sure that there's enough usable open space that could be used as a little small park for this community. Is that something that? And you answered that in your previous comments, just barely, that's your target market for TW Lewis is more of the retirees, people with empty nesters and that kind of thing, and wanting to move up into a nicer, bigger, larger home, but still retire and have less yard to maintain, that kind of thing. Is, is that, was that your experience in the adjacent parcel? Is that kind of who bought from you, or did you have a different mix and maybe you should address a tot lot or something like that? I don't know. And really, it's irrelevant to the zoning case, end of the planning case, we get that overall. And you can address all those comments and questions, but I guess at the end of the day, it's still kind of irrelevant to the cases that we're being talked to tonight, so.
Chairman Commissioner, I do appreciate the question. And TW Lewis, they do have experience building in Seville. They've got a great deal of market data there because they just built in Sienna, which is just to the west of this. And you're exactly right, their market, it was to the empty nesters, the folks that, you know, not startup families. We do need to remember that Seville, Seville does have amenities. Just to the south of this property is the golf clubhouse. They have a pool structure you can see on this map, and I may have one that is zoomed in, it's going to be hard to get to, but they've got a pool facility here with water slides. So it is a membership-based club. But, you know, at these price points, I think it's realistic to expect, and certainly the golf course operators expect that a significant number of the folks that buy in this community will become members and will utilize those amenities. But there are amenities here. They haven't considered providing, you know, tot lots or things like that because, you know, that's just not the market that will buy these homes. Thank you.
I do have a question that kind of adds to that now, we're public right now. But I look at your plan, and lot sixty-one and forty-two, I'm looking at your color. I don't know how to reference them back to your plan. Basically, that one without the thank you on it. Sixty-one and forty-two basically look like the, I mean, as lots that perfectly, you know, if taken out, would make really good tot lots, open space. And also kind of maybe take on some of the retention drainage issues if, you know, if there are some. I understand that they'll have to be designed, the town will force the development to make sure that those types of issues are resolved, but gives you another option to that. Has there been a look at those two lots as, or one of those two lots?
Chairman, members of the commission, I do appreciate the question. So this plan provides, it exceeds the ten percent open space that's required by the town's zoning ordinance and regulations or land development code. It's consistent with the open space that's provided within the community. It's consistent with every other neighborhood and smaller parcel that's part of Seville. And so from a, from a requirement standpoint, the open space that's provided here in these areas, and I know part of those are used up in maintaining the pedestrian connections that the neighbors have been asking for, but we do meet and exceed the ten percent that is required by the town. We haven't looked at a need for additional amenitized areas because the market just doesn't say that that's necessary. And to the point about retention, there's just no engineering need for additional retention within this site because the Seville master plan and the master drainage plan already accommodates drainage from this site. I appreciate that.
And your ten percent, is that green area, the green areas?
All of the green areas. I realize this area is all shown green. We certainly aren't counting the part of that that is roadway. But yeah, there are, there are green areas within the community. This, this area along here is about fifteen feet wide, and so, you know, it's room enough. I have, I have children, and I remarked to, to one of my colleagues that my kids can throw a football, you know, you give them a little patch of grass and they'll make up a game and play in it. But, you know, here we're talking about a fifteen-foot-wide green area.
It certainly doesn't look like that to scale. I don't know if that, what you have to mention. I look at a lot of your green spaces as, as connection points and not actual uses of spaces. So I just kind of wonder where you're looking actually for your patch of grass.
Chairman, I appreciate that. These are seventy-foot-wide lots, so to scale, you know, it's an area that, to scale, it's about fifteen feet on our plan. So there are areas within the communities, you know, some are certainly larger than others. But again, you know, when we, when we total the open space that's provided, it exceeds the town's requirements. And the market to put those additional amenities in just hasn't been something that has been looked at because there's, the market isn't there for that.
Well, I'm looking at, I guess, I'm just looking at a use for these spaces, but I guess we can talk about that on the dais. We, I'm just looking at, you're asking for a larger density than proposed because we are looking at it from fifteen to seventeen, or fifteen to seven, not looking at it as Boutique Hotel. So that's my, I'm just looking for more useful spaces for this community. So I guess that's my questions. Did you have any questions? Commissioner Boomfield?
I do. With, with the request from fifteen to seven, or, yeah, from fifteen to seven, I'm, I'm assuming that's market-driven and not necessarily to get more density, but because most of your clientele want probably a larger lot, or a larger home on a smaller lot. They want less to take care of, more free time to go, enjoy what Seville has to offer, golf course, the clubhouse, the other things that are out there. And that, that sounds to me like what we're really after here, that it's a market-driven thing, not necessarily a, we have to do this to get it to a price point. It's what the market wants.
Chairman Commissioner, you're exactly right. And I think it's important for us to point out, the Sienna community just next door has, you know, virtually zero open space within that community. And if we flip, whoops, went the wrong direction. When we look at this, the open space that the buyers of these homes enjoy, there is open space, over ten percent, within this smaller community. But a number of these lots, in fact, I think most of these lots actually backed to open space, they backed to the golf course. So one of the things, when they're looking for, to build in, or to build a new home, to buy a new home in this community, they're looking for open space. They enjoy that, you know, right out their back door, just like many of the neighbors do. You know, they back to greens and fairways and tee boxes. And that's why they're buying in the golf community.
Can I clarify something about the Sienna? No, at this moment, we just have the applicant right now. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from staff or comments additional?
I'd just note that we have our development engineer here, so if you had any questions, it's more of a plat issue somewhat, but grading drainage came up, so he's good enough to come if you had any questions.
Well, that'd be great, if he can come up and kind of speak a little bit about the drainage and how it works.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to talk a little bit because I know the neighbors have some concerns, and there have been some flooding issues in Seville. But those, those particular issues, and I, just to reiterate what the applicant has said, those are a result of storm drain maintenance problems. The flooding that came down the streets and there was nowhere for it to get out into the golf course, which is adequately sized for the drainage. And in fact, you could, you'll notice if you look at the other parcels in Seville, none of them have standalone drainage. The golf course itself is designed as the retention basin for the hundred-year flood event. And it was, it was designed with the larger, more intense development in mind, so, but we will certainly look at that as they come forward with their final plans and make certain that all the drainage that's necessary is still maintained within the golf course.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any questions, Commissioner Mudi?
I had a question for staff.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
I was just hearing it noted before that the current application meets the ten percent open space requirement. Is SF seven and SF fifteen both have ten percent open space requirements?
It's based on density, yeah. So that, both of them fall into our, you know, the density of, you know, around three and three to four, and four, under three is the determining factor in our residential design guidelines. So it's not necessarily based on zoning, based on the overall density of the subdivision.
But it, I'm trying to determine.
But that's correct. It would be the same.
Okay.
It would be the same, yeah.
Thanks.
I do have also a question, just making sure I understand this density map that we The majority of Seville, there's chunks of it that are SF fifteen, and then seven, and then six, in different, all broken up by the golf course. But I don't know if we had a breakdown of the area. Yeah, you can put it up there. Yeah, you can put it up there. There we go. Thank you. So I comment that the applicant made, there's an overall maximum density of Seville and this falls, I'm assuming that we have in front of us, it falls, since this is the last parcel, it keeps under the maximum density of overall.
That's correct. It may be hidden in the report, but on page five, I kind of delve into that a bit. It's, they're at 2914 overall, which they have to be under 3,025 for all of Seville, so they are. There's a maximum dwelling units per acre at 2.33. Now, this would make Seville 2.21. And there's even an obscure requirement for the record road alignment here and having so many parcels, which technically part of this is on east of the record road alignment, but they'd still be under that cap as well. So it still is in compliance with those requirements of the original PAD.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion. Well, anybody want to start?
I would like to.
Okay.
I, being as it's the last parcel and it's been sticking out there probably like a sore thumb right next to their beautiful clubhouse and facilities there, I think that as a town, we could be grateful and as the residents of Seville that it's finally going to development. And I think it meets all of the requirements and meets everything, so I personally am in favor and think that it's a, it'll be a great addition to the town and to Seville.
Thank you. Vice Chair Sipple?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I want to thank T.W. Lewis. You guys did take to heart some of the things that we talked about in our study session and made some changes, so I appreciate you doing that. You know, for me and the discussion of open space, our family uses the clubhouse and the pools and the basketball courts quite often. We don't rarely go looking for a park in that area. There are other parks that we can use within the community as well as our backyard. So I am not concerned about open space in this section as well. I agree with Commissioner Bloomfield in that. I think that if you're looking for an empty nester, I'm a family of five, wouldn't even consider this because the lot size isn't big enough. So I'm already out of the ballpark because my family's too big. So I think it really does bode well for those empty nesters and at that price point. And being so close to the golf course clubhouse may allow for more people to, I mean, walk right over there and get going. So I am in support of the project. I appreciate it coming forth and for you making the changes that you did, so thank you.
Commissioner Blazer?
I just echo the thoughts that have been shared. I think the applicant did a good job of reacting to the input from the study session, and I think it fits in well with the surrounding area, and I think it'll be a great, great project.
Commissioner Whitman?
I'd like to concur with my fellow commissioners. I think it's designed as a great product and a great project and a great one, obviously, for Seville. I don't have any concerns over the lack of any sort of tot lot or amenity area for children. I mean, you're right next to the clubhouse, which is plenty enough activities for grandchildren or people who live in that community as well as the golf course. Plus, a lot of people with young children use their own backyards and, I mean, it's a decent enough sized yard or lot in order to have recreation area in the backyards. So the design that's presented before us tonight with the changes proposed tonight, I'm in agreement with.
Well, I guess that makes me the lone wolf. I actually think that lot 61 is kind of cramming it in. That's a perfect spot with the separation of, with the sewer easement. I think that that one kind of becomes an island to itself. I know you won't quite notice it, but with the trail, I think that kind of makes a canyon with the two fences. We saw a diagram that showed the fences and I think that kind of becomes an alleyway and I don't think it's a terrible thing because I think it'll be a community into itself. It's small enough parcel of land that I think everybody will get to know each other in this small part of Seville. But I do think in going to the density that lot 61 would have been very nice to have an open space. That isn't part of the clubhouse because you do have to pay separate fees. You don't automatically get to go to the clubhouse. You may decide to be there, but not part of it.
If they own a T.W. Lewis house, they should be able to afford the clubhouse.
Maybe you don't. But that's kind of my viewpoint on it. Overall, I think the design's good, other than that one standing point that I think would really resolve a lot of standing issues with the community. Gives a little more open space that they can control within this community and part of the community and maybe pick up a little extra drainage, though it wouldn't be very much. But it's also would be designed, either way, should be designed to pick up all those issues. So I don't know. I guess, I haven't made my decision of if I'm in favor or not, so. Anybody else? Commissioner Mudi?
Just on some of those points, I don't think you're going to have all of them addressed by that lot 61 area. I mean, it's not large enough to be functional for drainage probably and be an open space and a tot lot. I mean, if it's going to be a tot lot, it's probably going to be at grade. It's going to drain to the street and contribute to the drainage just like it does as a standalone lot. So I don't think it's going to be a panacea for all those ills. It's going to be one or the other and...
Right, but it would be able to percolate differently than a hardscape and you would have some break in grade. I'm not saying that it would pick up, it solved the world of Seville, but I do think that having grassy area or does be able to perk a lot different than someone's backyard with a pool or hardscape and so, but it won't solve the world.
Only if they grade the site to, for that to be a low point focal point, which may only actually encourage flooding in that general area should those dry well silt over or not percolate or not be maintained. So it may have a reverse impact there, an unintended consequence.
Well, you'd have overflow pipes going through the connection tying to the drain. But that's a design issue, so we're not worried about that. Okay, well, do we have a motion?
Just a quick comment. The design review board, we talked about it recently, when you get too many engineers on it, which was the point we were trying to make, right? And architects. Thank you.
Yeah, there's no engineer here.
I apologize for starting the comments that way. I got it started. In an effort to rectify that, I'd like to make the stab at the proposal.
Okay.
I recommend to the town council approval of GP 14-10 to change the land use classification of 19.17 acres of real property generally located in southeast corner of Clubhouse Drive from 1.2 dwelling units to 2 to 3.5 dwelling units. And for the reasons set forth in the amended staff report, recommend Z 14-28 for approval to the town council as well.
With the modified stipulations?
With the attached stipulations in the amended staff report.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bloomfield, a second by Vice Chair Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. That brings us to item number 16, GP 14-02, which is the annual general plan amendment or general plan update and ME temps.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. I'm more than happy to make a presentation. If you have specific questions, I can also answer those, and I am prepared to make a presentation if you'd like.
If you could just give us some highlights, that would be great.
Certainly. If you'll recall, approximately a year ago, we came before the planning commission and asked to move forward with an update to chapter 10 of the general plan and specifically the San Tan character area within such. If you'll recall, there are four character areas within the Town of Gilbert. The San Tan character area is the largest in South Gilbert, and it is the one that's been having, as we saw tonight, a lot of activity down there with development. And it had been mentioned numerous times that maybe we should revisit not only the San Tan character area standalone plan, but also chapter 10. In doing so, we've come before planning commission several different times. We started out also holding open houses to the public. We mailed over 10,000 invitations and had two public meetings held last summer. We got comments back ranging from "we want parks" to "leave the general plan the way it is" and "we love South Gilbert." So a lot of input, a lot of comments. You can just see from the aerial how it's beginning to really develop down there. There's not that much vacant land left that is green filled in which to develop. This is the general plan, land use categories as it stands today. A number of different comments we got said, "leave the general plan the way it is. We support the general plan as shown in the current land use categories." And we also did an overall analysis of land uses down there as it was one of the things that was brought up on numerous occasions is, is there enough commercial land? Is there enough employment down in the San Tan character area and how do those numbers look? And what we did, and you'll recall, I believe I brought this to you at study session a meeting or two ago, that just did raw number crunching per capita based on the number of people in the San Tan character area, based on the acreage and businesses that exist compared to the rest of Gilbert. And we did find that the San Tan character area was substantially underserved both today and at buildout and that Gilbert proper, North Gilbert, had substantially more services. Now, that's not surprising to find with employment considering the remainder of Gilbert has the San Tan freeway running through it. In some areas, it touches US 60 and there's also Williams Gateway Airport as well as the Chandler Airport. So finding employment at a higher level in the remainder of Gilbert is something that was to be expected, and we think that the 15 to 20-minute drive to some of those employment areas is still reasonable. As far as commercial, there's over 75,000 people in South Gilbert that need services, and that is taking into account surrounding mile or two with, outside of the Gilbert boundary. So we did hear from the neighbors down there, they want support services. They want to keep the commercial that's planned and they want to support the commercial that exists, and the numbers that we analyzed did support those facts. In addition to that, we also moved forward with updating and reviewing the documents that exist. Based on the existing San Tan character area standalone plan, we then looked over what chapter 10 said to make sure that it coordinated still and that there was nothing in chapter 10 of the general plan that was in conflict with existing documents, policies, or the land use development code. The land development code. I just dated myself there. So as far as what we were moving forward to with the document as to insert into chapter 10, you have the draft document before you this evening in your packet. It is based on the new branding character of the Town of Gilbert and based on the comments that we've received. So we really think that the word cloud that is on the front page of this really reflects the comments received at those meetings and the atmosphere and character of the whole area. As you can see, friends, pets, open space, trails, those are all very important to those who live down in South Gilbert. As well as we opted for a sort of a web-based format in that there are little blurbs that are captioned out, italicized, colored differently, there are little inserts into the margins. Those are areas that we will look at annually and update on a regular basis so that they're kept fresh and current, whereas the remainder of the text tends to be things that can be taken care of in the larger general plan updates and updated, but there are items that don't change as often as some of the things that we've highlighted. Also, based on the neighborhood meetings, we created five characteristics that we thought represented the community's feedback, and we worked that into the general plan so that it was reflected in our goals and policies. So as you move forward with the existing conditions, that was part of the data collection and working through all those different things, we added the fissure hotline, which as you know, with Bordeaux that was seen a while back down in the south area, there's a lot of fissures that do occur at the base of the mountain, and it is something that needs to be kept up to date and that residents need to be aware of. Future needs on what we found through our analysis and how that will impact future development as it comes forward. And then on to goals and policies, once again reinforcing what we had today, making sure the language was clear and current and up to date with all the other policies of the town, and once again utilizing the characteristics, the five characteristics that were identified by the public during this process. Leading on to implementation, which the goals, policies, and implementation are really great guidelines and benchmarks as which to judge projects that are coming in that are asking possibly for changes or projects even moving forward to design review. It always gives us something to go back to, to compare against, and these are very clear, concise, and easy to use, not only for staff, but also for the public. With that being said, we'd like support from the planning commission to recommend approval to the town council at the end of April for approval of this general plan update for chapter 10. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Amy. Do we have any comments for staff? Okay.
If I could, I'd like to remind Vice Chair Sipple that there is a resident who sent in a letter that would like it read into the record. Thank you so much.
I wanted to remind him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's great. Vice Chair Sipple?
We did receive a letter via email that wanted this gentleman, is it Ostapuk?
Ostapuk.
Ostapuk, okay. And I'm going to summarize his letter here and council will have it to add to the packet. He states he's a longtime Gilbert resident. He's a proponent of preserving the San Tan character area, and he had another commitment that did not allow him to speak this evening. He talks about the San Tan character area having been worked with with stakeholder input, overwhelming support and approval by the residents, but he's concerned because the land can be quickly consumed and it can lose its value and identity. The planning commission has updated the San Tan character area provided by town staff. He's believing to speak upon, for the residents in the area, they continue to include wanting open space and preserving what little vacant R 0-1 and R 1-2 land use classifications that are left. He wants to make sure we address the buffering existing large lot residential homes from higher density homes with transitional zoning, open space buffering for similar-sized lots. He mentions, goes on to mention that town council has amended the general plan to accommodate newer high densities in this area 17 times. He makes sure that we do know that it has been voted on 17 times to approve smaller usage in lots. He mentioned, goes on to mention that as of March of 2013, only 5% of Gilbert's vacant land is designated land used lower than two homes per, for use of lower than two homes per acre. He sources the Town of Gilbert Planning Department on that. He said the update to the San Tan character area document is worthless if town staff and us as the planning commission and town council do not support it with our actions and votes. He asks us to step up and preserve and protect their vision. There you go.
Great, thank you, Vexer. Well, open it up to the public for other discussion. Hey, everybody, I have to look back there, but nobody's here I see in the audience to speak at this time, and so, any other comments from staff?
Your honor.
Yes.
Real quick, and Amy, I said this when you came to us at study session, the time and effort that goes... and effort that goes into this, well done, well done. And kudos to you and the staff that helped to put this together. I'm very excited about the completed document, if you will.
I agree. Well done. Good job.
Bravo.
Thanks. Oh, that was for staff, I mean. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for a motion or discussion. Anybody?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Mudi.
A move to recommend a Town Council approval of GP 14-02 of minor general plan amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Mudi and a second from Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. That brings us to administrative items and the minutes from March 4th. Do we have any discussion or motion? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Chairman, a move that we approved the minutes.
Okay, all right. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from, I keep wanting to say chairman. I don't know why. Commissioner Whitman, second by Vice Chair Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. Brings us to Communications and Report from Chairman and Members on the Commission for Current Events. Do we have anybody for discussion on current events? Okay.
Happy Easter to everyone.
And then brings us to Report from Council liaison.
Good evening, Chairman. Thank you for all of your hard work this evening. And I know that Amy just pointed this out, but I had shared the new branding with all of you via email. And this is what it looks like in person. And I'm so glad to see the staff using it in such a fashion. I leaned over to Linda and said, "Please tell me that as we update, that's what the whole general plan's going to look like because it's really attractive to look at and easy to read and fun instead of a document that is maybe a little intimidating to a lot of people." It was to me when I, before I started the Planning Commission. I have a couple of things to share with you. Since I last saw you, March 13th was a really big day in Gilbert. Army Ranger Corey Remsberg, who was the soldier that was recognized at the State of the Union last year, was given a home here in Gilbert. And as a big surprise, President Obama showed up and was here in Gilbert for the afternoon or for about an hour at Corey's home and in his backyard and able to celebrate that with him. That was kind of a big deal. Our Gilbert police stepped up at very short notice to help close streets and block traffic and keep the area safe and controlled. I know I shared it on Facebook and a lot of people had no idea and had no idea why the streets were closed and it was pretty interesting day in Gilbert. At the same time, the mayor and I and our town manager were meeting with a delegation from China, from our sister city, sister city in Lishan, China. They were so happy to be here and have asked for a delegation to go to China this year. So we'll see if that comes to fruition. They loved visiting Gilbert, loved learning about our history, loved being here and seeing everything that we have to offer and how we've been growing at such a fast pace. And if any of you are interested in helping design a few of the playgrounds here in Gilbert, the Parks and Recs Department is looking for feedback from everyone. And you can visit gilbertaz.gov forward slash project playground. They'll be taking votes on playground designs until April 12th. And up to April 12th, I guess right before that, April, Saturday, April 11th is We Are Gilbert Day. It's the day that you can get out and volunteer in the community. There's lots of options and places to volunteer, even with your kids, which I know is sometimes kind of hard when you have little kids, to find places to volunteer. And that can be found on gilbertcan.org. Four Our City runs that and Council member Victor Peterson is very, very involved with that program and helping to advance that program and get more people involved in it. So I thought I would help him out a little bit tonight and mention that. And I don't know if you've received invitations yet, but at the April 14th council meeting at 5:00 PM, we'll be looking for one member of each planning, excuse me, each commission and board in the Town of Gilbert to come to the council meeting. Because in honor of National Volunteer Week, we would like to recognize the board and commission members. And then on April 15th, we're inviting all of you, every board and commission member in the town, to attend a little get-together at the Art Intersection. You should be receiving an invitation from the clerk's office if you haven't gotten that yet. And I'd love to be able to see you there. We'll have, like I said, all of our boards and commissions invited. The mayor will be there, members of the council will be there, and we'd love to just be able to chat. And there's some art exhibits for you to see and there'll be refreshments on hand. We'd like to take that opportunity to thank you for all of that you do for the community. And it was one of my big things, coming onto the council was to make sure that our boards and commissions were recognized. So I'm very thankful to have worked with the mayor to be able to do something so quickly this year, since I've only technically been on since January 15th. So I'm thankful for that and hope to see a lot of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. And brings to item 20, Report from Planning and Service Manager.
I really don't have a long list, although I really do thank you for your conversation with our public and I'm just proud to be part of this team. And also, a big thank you to Amy and Catherine for their work on the San Tan project. Of course, it is a big team effort, but I really want to give them an extra thanks on this. It looks great and it's coming along just well. Four of the commissioners will be up for hopefully reappointment soon. So please be sure that if you're one of those four, that you're putting in for a potential reappointment. So you know, your service is greatly appreciated and your skill and talent is very obvious to the public. So we appreciate your professionalism. Thank you.
Thank you. And brings us to adjourn the meeting. Or, so adjourned.
So moved.
So moved.